Tapos 'yung... Good morning. The meeting of...
Morning, good morning, Mr. Chair.
...of the call order. May we all stand for the opening prayer.
Almighty Father, thank you for this brand-new day. We thank you for this chance for us to gather together once more to talk matters that will result to your people's well-being, enlighten us and guide us, open our minds and our hearts as we come up with the decisions that will best improve the lives of our fellow Filipinos. Send us your wisdom, patience, and compassion. All this we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Comsec. There are motion to dispense with the calling of the roll.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I move that we dispense the calling of the roll.
Any second.
Second.
There's a motion to dispense with the calling of the roll, and Julie seconded. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. And a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the approval of the same.
Second.
There's a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the adoption, the approval of the same. Julie seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is carried. At this point, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the following members, physically present. Honorable Larni Lavinroque, Honorable Ray Florence Reyes, Honorable Keith Maica Tony Maik Tan, Honorable Ilohio Rodriguez, Ilohio Rodriguez, Honorable Solomon Chunggalaw, Honorable Wilter Palma, Honorable Maria Lucille Nava, and those in Zoom. We have Honorable Dante Garcia, Honorable Charisse Ann Hernandez, Honorable Marisa Delmar Maxino, Honorable Mark Go, Honorable...
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Tulang Goles, Honorable Carmelo John Lazatin, Honorable Bonifacio Bosita, Honorable Jeanette Garin, Honorable Renante Arrogancia, Honorable Romel Romolo Kid Peña Junior, Honorable Fernando Cabredo, Honorable Eleanor Bulot Begtang, and Honorable Daphne Lagun, and Honorable Ernesto Junicio Junior. Thank you very much for your presence. Also, Honorable Peter Miguel. Comsec, please acknowledge the presence of our esteemed resource persons.
Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, the Comsec.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, honorable members of the Committee on Health. With us today in attendance as resource persons are the following: From the Department of Health, Dr. Enrique Ayayag Yusek of the Department of Health, Dr. Maria Teresa Vera of the Health Facility Development Bureau, and Dr. Sena, also of the Health Facility Development Bureau. From the Department of Budget and Management, with us today are Ms. Nihal Abdulrauf, the Acting Chief Budget and Management Specialist of the DBM, Mr. Justin Wuzer, Budget and Management Analyst, and the technical staff from the Organization Position Classification Compensation Bureau of the same agency, Mr. Paul Vincent Perotso, Mr. Carlo Miguel Centeno, Attorney Melanie Kilantang, Ms. Jennifer Barcoma, Ms. Marjorie Balenzuela, and Ms. Stanley Superdi Sioso. From the Department of Finance, Ms. Aina Reyes from the Philippine Heart Center, Dr. Joel Abanilia. Minister, from the Lung Center of the Philippines, Dr. Vincent Balanag Junior. From the Philippine Children's Medical Center, Dr. Sonia Gonzalez, and Mr. Anthony Manuel Garcia. From the Dr. Catalino Gallego Nava Provincial Hospital, Dr. Indusensio Lopez, Dr. Rosana Solidum, and Ms. Emma Ebreo. Also, from the same hospital, Ms. Risa May Bylon and Ms. Divine Villanueva. That would be all for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Comsec.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Please identify yourself.
Bem Noel po, O'Anwaray, Mr. Chair. I just want to be an unopressant po tayo.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the presence in Zoom of Honorable Bem Noel. Thank you very much for your presence. Also, Honorable Jervil Lovistro, Honorable Ian Paul D., Honorable Floria, Honorable Maria Rachel Arenas, Honorable Journey Jet Nisai, and Honorable Salvador Plieto. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, may I also be recognized, Representative Maria Angela Garcia. Thank you, po.
Yes, thank you for your presence, Honorable Angela Garcia. Honorable Angela Garcia.
Good morning, everyone, distinguished colleagues, and our esteemed guests and resource persons. Our first agenda for today are bills establishing specialty centers in hospitals under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health, pursuant to the constitutional mandate of the state to promote and protect the right to health of the people and instill health consciousness among them by making health services available, accessible, and affordable for all. Republic Act Number 11223, or the Universal Health Care Act, was passed into law on February 202019. To fully realize, however, the goals and objectives of the universal health care, the establishment of the health facilities is critical. Under the Universal Health Care Act of 2019, health care provider networks composed of health facilities providing primary to tertiary level care are linked to an apex or end-referral hospitals and other facilities providing specialized services needed by its catchment population. To ensure accessibility of health facilities under the continuum of care, select DOH hospitals will be upgraded to operate with specialty centers for one or more identified medical and/or surgical specialties and shall serve as an apex or end-referral hospitals of HPCNs. Thus, the bills we are about to deliberate upon today seeks to establish specialty centers based on the top burden of disease and special needs identified by the Department of Health, namely cancer care, cardiovascular care, lung care, renal care, renal and kidney transplant, brain and spinal care, trauma care, burn care, orthopedic care, physical rehabilitation medicine, infectious disease, and tropical medicine, toxicology, mental health, geriatric care, neonatal care, dermatology care, eye care, and ear, nose, and throat care. At this point, the Chair would like to recognize the authors of bills establishing the specialty centers in hospitals under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health. We have House Bill Number 4334 by Honorable Angelo Marcos Barba, House Bill Number 5563 by Representative Honorable Samuel Versosa Junior, and House Bill Number 666 by yours truly. The Chair would now call on the members, on the authors of the bills for their sponsorship. So, may we now call on Congressman Versosa for his sponsorship speech.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Mike Tan.
On behalf of the Honorable Samuel S. Versosa Junior, I move to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 5563 as his sponsorship speech.
Any second.
Mr. Chair.
So there's...
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 4334.
No, for 5563.
I don't know.
5563.
5563, and to adapt the explanatory note as the sponsorship speech. Julie seconded, the motion is carried.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Palma.
On behalf also of Representative Angelo Marcos Barba, let his explanatory note serve as his sponsorship speech. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Julie seconded.
Second.
There's a Julie seconded motion to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 4334 as the sponsorship speech. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. And... May we now call on Honorable Versosa, he's online, for his sponsorship speech. Okay. Honorable Versosa is not present at this moment. So, on House Bill Number 666, in the interest of time, I'd like to move for the adoption of my explanatory note as my sponsorship speech.
Second.
So, the motion to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 666 will be adopted as a sponsorship speech is carried. We now call on... And before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Ramon Rodrigo Gutierrez, Honorable Rodolfo Ompong Ordanes, Honorable Evgeny Vincente...
Luis... Padalok ngan...
Maria Victoria Copilar, Honorable Maria Carmen Zamora, and Honorable Samuel Versosa. May we now call on Yusek Tayad for his comment.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair and the honorable members of this committee. The position paper I'm about to declare is on several House bills, not limited to those mentioned earlier by the Chair. And if I may be given permission, I have to read them out loud. House Bills Number 3081, 3134, and 5655 by Representatives Arjo Atide, Florence Reyes, Gas Tambunting, an act establishing regional branches of specialty hospitals such as the Philippine Heart Center, National Kidney Transplant Institute, Lung Center of the Philippines, Philippine Children's Medical Center, and the Philippine Cancer Center appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. House Bill Number 5897 by Representative Kaif Maika Tan, an act establishing branches of specialty hospitals in all regions and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 5563, an act establishing specialty center in every region and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Sam Versosa. House Bill Number 3323 by Representative Jefferson Kanguin, an act establishing multi-specialty hospitals in different regions to facilitate access to specialized care and appropriating funds therefore. House Bills Number 1939, 1768, and 2667 by Representatives Luis Raymond Villaferte Junior, Miguel Luis Villaforte, Chiyoyoshi Anthony Oribata, Nicolas Enciso the Eighth, Marlene Alonte, and Romel Rico Angara, an act establishing satellite specialty hospitals to facilitate access to specialized medical care in identified regions of the Philippines and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 3519, an act institutionalizing the establishment of tertiary care hospitals in all regions and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Ivan Howard Gintu. House Bill Number 4334, an act establishing specialty health care units attached to regional hospitals of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Angelo Marcos Barba. House Bill Number 2562, an act creating one regional kidney and transplant institute in each of the administrative regions in the Philippines, providing funds therefore and for other purposes by Representative Ralph Recto. House Bill Number 2561, an act creating one regional lung center in each of the administrative regions in the Philippines, providing funds therefore and for other purposes by Representative Ralph Recto. An act creating one regional heart center in each of the administrative regions in the Philippines, providing funds therefore and for other purposes by Representative Ralph Recto. House Bill Number 2742, an act establishing specialized hospitals such as the Philippine Heart Center, National Kidney Transplant Institute, Lung Center of the Philippines, Philippine Children's Medical Center in the Visayas and Mindanao, and appropriating funds therefore by Representative Ruel Peter Gonzaga. House Bill Number 3752, an act satellites specialty hospitals in northern Luzon to provide access to specialized medical care appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes by Representative Ferdinand Alexander Marcos. House Bill Number 5446, an act satellite specialty hospitals in central Luzon to provide access to specialized medical care appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes by Representative Anna York Bondok. Here now is our position. The Department of Health supports the noble intention of the above-mentioned measures which seek to establish specialty centers across every region in the country. As most specialty hospitals are located in Metro Manila, these measures are intended to address access gaps to specialized care where the poor and underprivileged, particularly those from geographically isolated and disadvantaged areas or guidas, are unable to obtain access. The Department of Health has already crafted its development plan for specialty care which is part of the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan 2020 to 2040. Sixteen specialties were selected based on the country's top burden of disease, existing laws and mandates, and special needs. The Department of Health also developed the Resource Stratified Frameworks for each facility level and specialty which defines the services and essential resource requirements necessary at each level of care from primary care up to the national specialty centers. Based on this framework, Mr. Chair, DOH hospitals shall be upgraded to serve as either national specialty center, advanced comprehensive center, or basic comprehensive center to deliver specialized services for specific catchment areas. All specialty centers are Level III specialty or general hospitals that shall serve as apex or end-referral facilities at the regional, basic comprehensive center, subnational, advanced comprehensive center, and national as national specialty center levels. In view thereof, the Department of Health fully supports the above-mentioned measures and interposes no objection to the establishment of specialty centers across the country provided that the following recommendations are duly considered. First, the proposed establishment of specialty centers shall mean upgrading the existing DOH hospitals and will not entail the construction of new specialty hospitals. Building single specialty hospitals require a longer time and a higher budget compared to upgrading the existing DOH hospitals to have the multi-specialty capability. Establishment of new hospitals requires a law or policy and its development shall be in phases before becoming a tertiary hospital with specialty and subspecialty services. Second, the DOH hospitals shall formulate their development plans consistent with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan in order to access capital outlay investment through the Health Facilities Enhancement Program of the DOH and other sources of funds or government aid through official development assistance and development partners. Third, heads of the Department of Health hospitals shall provide detailed annual reports of their activities, accomplishments, and recommendations to the DOH and the Congress. And lastly, to ensure an adequate number of specialists, the role of other agencies is important in the production and training of health workers. Local government units may sponsor scholars for medical and other allied health courses and later on employ them to serve in their locality. Mr. Chair, we respectfully submit this position paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Yusek Tayad. I'd like to acknowledge the presence online of Honorable Jane Castro. Thank you very much. Just to clarify, we deliberately excluded the bills on the establishment of specialty hospitals in contradistinction to the establishment of specialty centers because we feel that the specialty centers is different from a specialty hospital. So, in the specialty centers, the understanding is that we establish the centers in already existing hospitals. Whereas if you establish a specialty hospital, this means all the construction of the building and et cetera. So, we will have another meeting for the bills on the creation or establishment of specialty hospitals. But for today, we will limit our discussion, our deliberation on the establishment of the specialty centers. Just for...
Mr. Chair, my apologies, but the position paper covers both the specialty hospitals, specialty centers, and the specific bills on specialty centers will require therefore the recommendations I just mentioned. And we're happy to note that you, that the committee at least agrees with the Department of Health's position that these specialty centers will not have to be built independently, but they will be assigned to existing DOH hospitals.
Yes, and thank you very much for your comment, Yusek Tayad. In fact, today is the initial deliberation, and then for the next meeting, in the deliberation of the creation of the specialty hospitals, we might be able to reconcile. Baka pwedeng pagsamahin na 'yung specialty hospital with the specialty centers, depending on the consensus of the committee during the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Congressman Go.
Yeah, I'm sure the Department of Health probably has already a list of all hospitals managed by DOH that have existing specialty, how do I call it, centers or units in each of this region or in these hospitals. Probably we can have an inventory, let's say, the different regional hospitals under DOH, the name of the hospital, what are these specialty centers within each hospital? So, we would know exactly what we will need for all these specialty units that will be or that are proposed to be established in each of the government hospitals in the country, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mark Go. Precisely, the honorable member of this committee... Precisely, the honorable member of this committee is correct that at least we have an inventory already of the hospitals, and we can match exactly the specialty center that will be accepted in this hospital, and that this is based on certain criteria, including burden of disease. Now, the specialties that I mentioned earlier, numbering sixteen, include the following: cardiovascular care, lung care, renal care, and kidney transplant and brain, and spine care, orthopedic care, and several others. But we are limited today for the cardiovascular care, lung care, renal care, and kidney transplant. Your Honor, the list will be provided. My colleagues are here, except that they're waiting for the results of their antigen test. Either they are provided today or we can submit it for your scrutiny. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chair?
With indulgence of me, I just want to follow up, the same, Mr. Chair, if Yusek or the DOH could submit also their position paper to the committee, the one that being read by Yusek Tayad.
Thank you, Yusek Tayad.
We shall submit, as I have stated earlier, and- Okay.
Mr. Chair?
We will inform the body as soon as we have the list, and if this is not possible, we are going to transmit it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mark Go.
Yeah, just to follow up, you know, although it's probably at this point because of the lack of budget, I think in most of these hospitals that have existing specialty centers and those that we will have specialty centers, I would surmise that they would require also infrastructure to be built, or else if you put everything in the same hospital, additional specialty centers, heart center, lung center, cancer center, and so forth and so on, I don't think they can accommodate all these centers within one hospital, considering that they're already congested right now, and if you put additional centers, I would feel that they need infrastructure, not only infrastructure, but also manpower to do the work on this. That means therefore, it would require additional budget and even increase in bed capacity, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Mark Go, a comment from the Department of Health.
Okay. We understand your position, Honorable Mark Go, and we have this information that will perhaps guide the committee. There are advantages to this strategy of having existing hospitals to actually assimilate these specialty centers. Number one, the community that have accessed their services will now be provided with specialty centers, and because the Department of Health through the Universal Healthcare Act has actually embarked on a healthcare provider network, then promoting the services of a specialty center within existing hospitals will already not be difficult to do. Number two, we will save time in having the services provided immediately because we cannot wait several years if we build separate specialty centers. Number three, we are looking at the depth of health professionals that can be assigned to these specialty centers if they are built independently as it is. We already have a problem with existing hospitals because of the situation of a brain drain that we don't want to be amplified when we build separate specialty centers. Number four, the Philippine Heart Center, National Kidney Transplant Institute, Lung Center has developed programs that allows them to already provide technical assistance to existing hospitals that can actually assimilate a specialty center. In fact, we have several hospitals and we have a model wherein this already works. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Chair, just to respond to the point raised by Dr. Tayad.
Please proceed, Honorable Mark Go.
Yeah, you know what, I'm speaking here is not an independent specialty center. Within a hospital, putting up additional specialty centers would require infrastructure, personnel, equipment, and so forth and so on. Although initially, probably, probably upon approval of this bill, we can already add the specialty centers, but at the end of the day, we need to increase their capacity in terms of infrastructure, manpower, and so forth and so on to be able to provide services under this specialty centers, Mr. Chair.
Yusek Tayad.
Thank you, Honorable Mark Go. I misunderstood, and we are happy that you have interposed that we can facilitate the assimilation of specialty centers in these hospitals with your proposal. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
We would like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Lutz Mercado and Honorable Luisa Lurencaresma. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Honorable Ben Noel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For purposes of clarity lang po, para maintindihan ko, and and I understand the position of the department. Will this include, not to be discussed today, you establishing also of satellite hospitals? Or is it just the specialty hospitals that hindi pa muna idi-discuss?
The establishment of specialty hospitals and satellite hospitals will be discussed in another meeting, Honorable Ben.
Thank you. So that means my house bill will not be discussed today?
Yes, Honorable Ben.
Thank you.
May we now recognize Dr. Joelle Abanilia of the Philippine Heart Center?
Mr. Chair, before anything else?
Sorry, Honorable Palma.
There's number eight here, committee deliberations to local bills. So are we going to defer this? So that's what Congressman Noel was asking. Tayad, local bills nga, establishment of- I understand Kong Noel was, Ben Noel was asking. Number eight, yeah.
Yes, thank you, Congressman Palma. I was actually referring to that.
Sorry, Honorable Ben, your bill on the establishment of satellite hospital in eastern Visayasis will be taken today. Will be taken up today.
Thank you.
Dr. Joelle Abanilia, you're now recognized.
Good morning, all your honorable congressmen. We take strongly and we agree with the position of the Department of Health. I know there is some confusion. I think this is one thing that we should settle siguro as of today. What is a satellite? What is a specialty hospital? What is a regional hospital with a specialty center? Now, the stand of the Department of Health is that we are developing the specialty centers in each regional hospital. So that will be more pragmatic. It is already existing. They have their facilities. They are the most equipped manpower and equipment-wise. It is also true, if we anticipate that there will be other centers that will be put up, eventually, infrastructure will be needed. It's so hard to put up something when you are beginning and wala ka pang paglagyan. I think that that's a strong point of Honorable Mark Go. Na dapat may infra, no? Kasi pagstart ka and you start nowhere. Wala ka nga opisina, walang- That's quite a challenge. But we still, we believe, we have discussed this, we have talked this over and over among us. We feel that the most practical is to develop the regional centers with specialty centers. In fact, we have started already. We have already, sa cardiovascular, we have already nine regional hospitals with CAT lab and do surgical surgery, and we are developing the remaining eight. We have already communications with them, and they know what to do, the manpower that is needed, the equipment and everything. It's a difficult process, no? So we were asking their patients, these are toddler years. There will definitely be challenges, pasensyalang. But now, augmented by the support from the government and the president himself, we are more enthusiastic about it. And perhaps, you know, everything, nothing moves without budget. So the funding of these things will be at the back of all this.
Thank you, Dr. Abanilia.
Mr. Chair?
Honorable Maria Delmar, you're now recognized.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, to our resource people and to our colleagues. This is just for clarification, Po. House Bill Number 4334 and 5563 both provide for the establishment of specialty healthcare units or specialty centers in DOH-administered retained hospitals in every region. May I ask for clarification? Do all our regions have their respective DOH-retained regional hospitals, Mr. Chair?
Department of Health?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask your permission so that Dr. Sena or Director Tesvera can answer the query. Thank you.
Dr. Sena, do all our regions have a DOH-retained hospitals?
Yes, Your Honor, all regions-
Tertiary hospitals.
Have DOH hospitals. However, for Mima Ropa, there is still no DOH Level III hospital. So we are upgrading the DOH hospitals in Mima Ropa, for example. So the Hospital ng Palawan will be upgraded to become Level III hospital and to further specialty capability also, and to be able to serve as apex of the healthcare provider network, Your Honor.
So the answer is yes, except Mima Ropa.
And Karaga, Your Honor. Mima Ropa and Karaga, Your Honor.
And Karaga.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, yes, Congressman.
I would like to clarify on that because Soc-Surgeon Region 12 doesn't have a regional hospital. That's why we're working on it.
Yes, Dr. Sena?
Yes, Your Honor, sorry, I forgot about South Cotabato, but there is the Soc-Surgeon hospital which is under the DOH, and we will upgrade the hospital for it to become the Regional Medical Center and also for their specialty capability, Your Honor. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Can we have the reactions from our guest first, and then we will ask from the members of the the committee after the comments from our resources speakers?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
Now, we have the director from the National Kidney and Transplant Institute, Dr. Licete.
Good morning, sir, Honorable Congressman. Yes, I agree that it's better that we have these specialty centers in DOH-retained hospitals. However, the Philippines is an archipelago and made up of more than seven thousand islands and with the gidas in the periphery. A specialty center like as for should at least be established in Luzon, Visayas, and Mindanao, but that would be on the long term. But for now, since we are all, you know, scanty on nurses, health workers, and also specialists that also have a problem, we can establish or capacitate the DOH-retained hospitals. And we have programs on this. For example, like if we are to have a renal transplant in these hospitals, we have a training for urologists to do donor nephrectomy because not all urologists can do donor nephrectomy. And these hospitals should be accredited also by the VHSF. BHFS, unlike heart operation. They need not be accredited as long as they have the specialist there. But for us, transplant surgeon, transplant anesthesiologist, our nephrologists who are adept in transplant also, and the urologists should be present in all these centers to be accredited for transplant. So we are gearing on this. Actually, we accept residents or fellows from the provinces so that after the training, homegrown sila, they will go back to their to their provinces. Because in the past, whenever we train fellows, they do not go back anymore to the provinces. Yes, I'll go back to Cebu, to Ilocos, like that, no? But then they all stay in Manila. We are now seventy-two transplant surgeons, and as now president of the PSTS and the Transplant Society, I encourage our graduates to spearhead this program that you have for these DOH-retained hospitals, and there's a center, the renal center, to be accredited. So that will be our contribution to your program, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Licete. Dr. Vincent Balanag of the Lung Center of the Philippines, you're now recognized.
Good morning to the honorable members of the House of Representatives and members of the Committee on Health. We, Lung Center, fully supports the various house bills in establishing specialty centers in the regional centers of DOH. We also fully support the DOH development plan of establishing the sixteen specialty centers in the existing DOH hospitals under its resource strategy framework. Actually, the Lung Center is already designated as an apex center for lung and chest diseases, and we have already actually engaged most of the regional hospitals of the DOH in terms of providing specialized lung care services, no? So actually, we have visited several of these already. We have sent our specialists to do missions to these hospitals. We have already graduated several surgeons, pulmonologists, anesthesiologists in these hospitals, and actually, they're already doing specialized services, no? So Lung Center is willing to play its part in developing expertise. Technical and logistic support to these hospitals in acquiring specialized equipment as well as building of specialized infrastructure needed to provide specialized care for this, no? So again, we fully support the house's bills as well as the DOH- So again, we fully support the House's bills as well as the DOH efforts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Balanag. Dr. Sonia Gonzalez of the Philippine Children's Medical Center.
Yes, good morning, Your Honor, and to the honorable committee. The Philippine Children's Medical Center also supports all the bills establishing specialty centers and also the DOH development plan for specialty care. The PCMC recognizes that all the hospitals have already existing Department of Pediatrics, but mostly would be practicing in general pediatrics. So our position is to level up these services into subspecialties. So also in concordance with the universal healthcare, we are also already starting with our neonatal care, advanced neonatal care. And hand in hand would be the perinatal care, which would involve high-risk pregnant women. And aside from this, we have also cancer in children and other subspecialties from the brain and involving other systems. What we would want is that although we really do not want to have another hospital or that would be in another meeting, but of course, we recognize that there would be an expansion, at least a renovation and expansion of facilities. Because these hospitals would be needing, let's say, an intensive care unit specifically for neonates and older children. And then for the high-risk pregnant women, they would be needing more equipment. So also for the other subspecialties, they would be needing the equipment and facilities that would entail also improving the space, giving them more space. And then the diagnostic equipment should also be there. Also, the PCMC would be really have an active role in the capacity building. Because we recognize that we need the subspecialists in pediatrics, not only among medical and nursing, but also the allied. So that would include the pharmacies, the Radtechs, and the other allied specialists, which would be involved in handling pediatric patients. They are not just the miniature adults, but they have special needs on their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. May we now call Honorable Angela Garcia? I think she was the one who was raising her hand. Honorable Garcia? Anyway, at this point, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Maria Vanessa Omentado, Honorable Adrian J. Advincula, and Honorable Doris Manikis, Honorable Joseline Tulfo, Honorable Steve Solon. Thank you, Honorable Garcia. You are now recognized. Honorable Garcia? We'll get back to you later, Honorable Garcia. While waiting for Honorable Garcia, may I have a clarification? In the list of specialty centers being established under the universal healthcare, there are sixteen specialties based on the burden of disease and some specialty or special needs. I noticed that there is, or there was no mention of the specialty of ear, nose, and throat, and obstetrics and gynecology. I had a previous discussion with Undersecretary of OIC, Undersecretary Verjere, regarding the specialty of ENT. And I understand there is an official letter of DOH to the Philippine Society of Otolaryngology, Head and Neck Surgery, creating a technical working group to study on including or the inclusion of ENT as one of the specialties to be specialty center, to be established in all regional, in all regions. May I know the status of the technical working group or the progress of this discussion on the inclusion of ENT as to be the seventeenth specialty under the universal healthcare?
Thank you, Your Honor. May I also have your permission that the updates will be provided by Dr. Sena again?
Thank you, Dr. Sena.
Thank you, Your Honor. There is already a technical working group exploring the possibility of including ENT as the priority specialties. We have started that, I think in the third quarter of the year, or yes, third quarter of the year, we have started already. And based on history, when we develop the development plan for the specialties, it will take us half a year more, so about the middle of 2023, Your Honor. As for the obstetrics and gynecology, we did not include that because it is already part of the four basic departments of hospital. So for other gynecological concerns, it can be addressed by other specialties such as cancer, trauma, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, the same as pediatrics? The Department of Pediatrics? But neonatology was there?
Yes, sir.
Ah, yes, okay. What is the in the proposed establishment of specialty centers? What's the budget for each specialty center or the entire sixteen specialty centers?
There are, the budgets are vary depending on the specialty. There are some specialties that may share equipment and infrastructure such as the specialty center for heart and lung. So each hospital developed their investment plan for each specialty because there is possibility of sharing resources. So as for the total data, we will submit, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sena. Yes, Congressman Miguel.
Mr. Chair, this would regard with six months or so as far as the technical working group studying inclusion of ENT. I think, Doctor, it's quite long. We can, I can voluntarily volunteer myself to facilitate the study because we get already a model of this kind of specialty, the ENT centers with fully equipped hospitals. So we can direct you to just study and probably from there, it much easier to finish your technical working group work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Marco.
I would like to summarize the inputs that have been stated earlier, Mr. Chair. And after that, propose for the approval of House Bill 4334 and 5563. Number one, I think there is a need on the part of the Department of Health to give us the different hospitals managed or administered by DOH in the so many regions that we have in the country. And what are the existing specialty centers right now in each of this hospital? And what are those that can be established more with a specific timeline? And what are the requirements so that we can implement these specialty centers in the various regional hospitals of DOH? Mr. Chair, if this can be answered, do you know exactly the caps that are supposed to be addressed in each of this regional hospital? And in that sense, we can answer or we can implement itong bills na ito, yun dalawa, 4334 and 5563, even when we approve them here in our committee, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Honorable Marco. You said Tayag?
Okay, thank you, Honorable Marco. That is an excellent framework. In fact, we have the same framework as will be given as an update from Dr. Sena. I was shown earlier a list of these centers in existing regional medical centers administered by the Department of Health. And it follows a specific framework so that at different levels of the healthcare and the spectrum of comprehensive services following the health provider network, we were able to match which centers will be developed in these existing regional medical centers, except for the three areas mentioned earlier where regional medical centers are being anticipated to be developed as fast as we can. I ask permission again, Your Honor, Dr. Sena to provide the update. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Yusek Tayag. May we now request the Department of Health or Dr. Sena to please submit the data and the requirements being requested by Honorable Marco, Dr. Sena?
Yes, Your Honor, we will submit to the Secretariat within the day, Your Honor. We will just print.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Marco.
After hearing from Dr. Tayag and Dr. Sena of their agreement to provide us the right or the information and the commit that they are supporting these bills, I would like to move for the approval of House Bills 4334 and 5563, Mr. Chair.
Before we approve, also to include House Bill 6666.
Ah, yes, okay, yes. Sorry, Mr. Chair, I missed the House Bill 6666.
But before we approve, is Honorable Angela Garcia around? Is she still online? Honorable Angela Garcia? Okay, so there's, we now act on the motion of Honorable Marco.
Yeah, second, second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so there's a move. There's a motion by Honorable Marco to approve House Bills number 6666, 4334 and 5563. Julie seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Another motion, Mr. Chair?
Ah, yes, Honorable Marco.
I would like to move also that all members present, both physically and online, be considered as co-authors of these three measures, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion to include all the members who are present physically and on Zoom to be co-authors of the three bills, Julie seconded, hearing no objection. The motion is carried. At this point, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Christine Alexi Chutor, Honorable Florida Rita Robes, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernandez, and Honorable Mary Mitzi Kahayonui. Thank you very much for your presence.
Thank you, Congress. I'll be in a bit.
Oh, thank you.
We now proceed with the local bills. First, we have House Bill number House Bill number 1904 and House Bill number 3786 by Congressman Honorable Solomon Chunggalaw. You are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I tackle House Bill number 1904 first? This was approved as House Bill number 17519 in the Eighteenth Congress and approved in December 13, 2021. And also approved in the Senate Committee Hating in March 22, 2022. But for lack of material time, it was not approved. Aside from me adapting the thirty note of House Bill 1904, may I just add additional that the province of Ifugao is the only province that does have a general hospital. Since it was condemned in 2010, after my third term in 2010. Garcia, I will have to talk about it. While DOH provided 100 million for the reconstruction of the Ifugao General Hospital, the shame was, and the natuluyat, Garcia, they charged it with the province and they bid it at 68 million a vertical building, kaya substandard, the additional funds by DOH. I will contract on the implemented, Garcia, compromised foundation. Kasa lang din ang DOH siya na, Garcia, di pumayak sila. So it's my promise that it has a general hospital now during the pandemic. Kawa ba yung province ako. That's why I filed this bill in the Eighteenth Congress. Now, apart from that, if you look at the region of the Cordillera, it's unusual, it's located, located from Kalinga in the north, Apayao, Ifugao, Mountain Province, Ifugao. Our regional hospital, which is the Congressman Louis Horta Hospital, is located in Mountain Province. Malayu, Apayao, Kaliga, and Ifugao. Now, while our people can go to region two or region one, let us face the reality, mga town namin, as a second-class citizen, kasi priority yung mga region one and region two. So there's a need for us to establish a regional hospital somewhere in Ifugao that can address eastern Mountain Province, Kalinga, and Apayao. That's why I filed 1904 as a necessity. That's why it was approved in Congress and the Senate. So, Mr. Chair, if possible, I would like that we approve House Bill 1904 immediately. But meron kami ngan bagada. Two House Bill number 3786, it's basically the same as 1904, only we integrated the Major Ferdinand Emergency Hospital, Emergency Hospital, which was abandoned by the province in 2010. Now, let me feel with the kindness of everybody. Alam mo yan, my history yan. During World War II, the former president, the father of the present president, was wounded and was being attacked by Japanese. Going to Visayas, he fell in Ifugao, mortally wounded. Now, there was an old man and a farmer who saved his life by covering him with the grass. So, hindi nakita 'yung mahapon. In the middle of the night, he went back with the help of the fielders to retrieve Major Ferdinand Marcos and nurtured him back to health to continue his agrilia activities. Now, years later in advance, when President Marcos became President in 1965, he remembered the old man that saved him. So, he ordered General Perez to bring the old man to him in Malakayang. And the old man did nothing. And the old man had him said, "Boheng, lika't samin." We want the hospital to save the life of our people. So, in 1967, President Marcos constructed the Major Ferdinand Edrelin Marcos Emergency Hospital in Batutu, Panlamot. Though unfortunately, the province abandoned it in 2010. That's why we would like to revive that because it has a history under the present son of the late President Ferdinand Marcos. Now, we will see, we will add to OSR opinion. Kung beday, na we can integrate the Major Ferdinand Edrelin Marcos, revive it and integrate it into the Eastern Cordillera Regional Hospital to serve eastern Mountain Province, the province of Ifugao, Kalinga, and Apayaw. Garcia, yung Louis Hora Memorial Hospital is in Baoku, near Benguet. That was the hospital of my late father-in-law. So, yeah, that's why we filed we filed House Bill number 3786 upon the request of my people, which was co-authored by Sandro Marcos, the grandson of the late president and the nephew Congressman Angelo Barber. So, Mister Chair, may I hear with the comment of DOH, you are they willing to admit the House Bill 3786? Or they can approve 1904 for the meantime? Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Chunggalaw. May we now hear the comment from the DOH, Dr. Melissa Sena?
Thank you, Mister Chair. The DOH supports the establishment of Eastern Cordillera Regional Hospital. We would just like to recommend that the hospital remain under the supervision and control of the province so that it will serve, it will be part of the healthcare provider network of the province. The DOH hospital shall remain the apex or end referral of the healthcare provider network. Further, Mister Chair, we recommend that the Major Ferdinand Edrelin Marcos Emergency Hospital in Lamot be upgraded or established as a separate hospital because pursuant to the Hospital Licenseure Act, there shall be separate licenses per facility. And also, the DOH does not recommend establishing extension facilities as it may deplete the resources, human resource budget of the parent hospital. So, we recommend separate licenses for separate hospitals. In the case of Ifugao, the DOH shall continue to support the province through the provision of capital, outlay, support, and technical assistance, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Chunggalaw.
Yes, Mister Chair. Maybe I would like to inform you that the original bill in the 18th Congress was the establishment of the Louis Hora extension in Ifugao. Garcia, Congressman Hora was the congressman of Ifugao for a long time of 15 years. But the hospital was established in Baoku, Mountain Province. So, Secretary Dugi objected, kubede, he prayed along a general hospital in Eastern Cordillera to be funded by DOH. Alam naman natin, hindi kaya ng Ifugao. Because you have to remember, Ifugao is a tourist center that is the home of the Banawi Riesteresses. And one of the requirement of tourism is a desert medical facility. Emaning for the victim and the Riesteresses na matay, Garcia, wala coming desert hospital. So, we are pleading that we establish a regional hospital funded by the national government. Otherwise, hindi kaya ang pinca, yung general hospital lang namin. Ifugao General Hospital, hindi pa kaya tapusin without the help of DOH. So, we are praying that it should be funded by the DOH, national government. I think there's objection in the last Congress and in the Senate. Thank you, Madam Mister Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Chunggalaw.
Yes, your honor, the DOH will provide support for the establishment such as capital outlay support for infrastructure and equipment. However, the recommendation is for the hospital to remain under the supervision and control of the province, your honor. Thank you.
Congressman Chunggalaw?
Well, if that is the case, then we have no choice. But perhaps we wait for the candidate person because it's a trial also, the candidate, and those that approve it and the commitment of DOH. That was a departmental commitment that it would be funded by DOH in the 18th Congress. And that's what I'm demanding now in the 19th Congress. That is a departmental commitment to the province of Ifugao. So, we'll just move for the approval, subject perhaps to the outcome.
Thank you, Congressman Chunggalaw. Congressman Miguel?
Having heard all the points taken under the House Bill 1904 and 3786, Mister Chair, I move to approve these particular bills.
Any second?
Seconded.
So, there's a motion to approve House Bill number 1904 and House Bill number 3786. Julie seconded, hearing no objection, the motion to approve House Bill number 1904 and number 3786. It's now approved, subject to style amendment.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, the college, thank you from the representative of DOH. Thank you.
Congratulations, Congressman Chunggalaw. Now, we move to House Bill 2905 by Congressman Attorney Mike Tan. Honorable Mike Tan, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Good morning po sa ating lahat. May I be allowed to submit the explanatory note of the bill as my sponsorship? But let me stress that this measure was highly recommended by the DOH Regional Office and was approved by the committee during the previous Congress. Based on the legislative records, this was the first time since at least the 13th Congress that a measure was filed for the municipality of Mulanay, a coastal town in the province of Quezon. Now, the bill is being refiled through House Bill 2905 with the intent of addressing the medical needs of the people from Mulanay through the establishment of a public hospital to be known as the Mulanay Medical Center as part of the progressive realization of the universal healthcare for all Filipinos. In this light, Mister Chair, may I ask the committee to favorably consider the measure? Thank you. That's all, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Attorney Mike Tan. May we now hear a comment from the DOH, Dr. Melissa Sena?
Thank you, Mister Chair. The DOH supports the establishment of Mulanay Medical Center. However, we recommend that it remain, that it will be under the supervision and control of the province. The DOH already has two hospitals in the province of Quezon, the Maria Eliezar General Hospital and Southern Luzon Multi-Specialty Center. We also recommend for the province to consider upgrading the services and increasing the bed capacity of the Bondok Peninsula District Hospital because it has a bed occupancy rate of 191%. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Dr. Sena. Any other comment?
Mister Chairman, if I may? This is Congressman Arrogancia, Mister Chairman.
Honorable Arrogancia, you are now recognized?
Yes, Mister Chairman. I would like to appeal when it comes to the Mulanay Hospital because Bondok Peninsula is a big district and we only have a very few bed capacity in Bondok Peninsula District Hospital. Personally, Mister Chairman, kailangan po namin ng hospital sa Mulanay under the DOH. Sapagat kung under the DOH po ito, mas mapibigyan po kami ng mas magandang pasilidad kung iialo lang po sa handa ng DOH, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Arrogancia. Comment from Dr. Sena of the DOH?
Sir, we still recommend that the hospital to be established in Mulanay be under the province. This is also pursuant to the DOH Devolution Transition Plan and the National Allocation Framework. Thank you, your honor.
Okay, Honorable Arrogancia?
Mister Chairman, I do respect the opinion of the DOH. But the problem, Mister Chairman, the inventory, hospital beds is only 63. Sa population ratio ng ano, ng 1, ng 0.13 or 1,700, ano, 1,7... Sorry, sorry, I missed the figure, Mister Chairman. Pero ako din sa figure, Mister Chairman, sobrang kulang po ang bed capacity namin sa Bondok Peninsula. Kaya po hindi nabibigyan ng tamong medical attention ang aming pong mga kababayan sa Bondok Peninsula.
Are you proposing a higher bed number?
No, Mister Chairman. Ay, ang proposing na baka pwedeng i-reconsider ng DOH ang pagkakaroon ng under nila sa Bondok Peninsula. Kasi wala po kami talaga sa Bondok Peninsula na maayos na pasilidad. Kung halimbawang under province po ito, okay naman po. But the problem, kulang po ang kakayanan ng probinsya namin sapagat limitad lang po ang aming pong kapasidad sa aming pong probinsya, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Arrogancia. Honorable Mike Tan?
Basically, the main point was is, ni Kong Reinan is the province is currently operating at a 15 district hospitals in the province of Quezon. And since yung district po ni Kong Reinan, the Bondok Peninsula is medyo malayo at medyo may kalakihan talaga yung lugar. Nahihirap po silang makarating rin po sa as pointed out by Dr. Melissa. May two current DOH hospital po ang Quezon, yung Southern Luzon Specialty and then yung Maria Eliezar, which is very far sa Bondok Peninsula po. Ang Maria Eliezar po is bordering Bicol na po ang hospital na yun. Yung Southern Luzon po is in Tayabas City and currently under construction pa lang po siya. So, basically, ang hirap po ma-access itong mga lugar na to. Yung from getting, going there pa lang po, mahirap na para sa mga taga-Bondok Peninsula. And yung situation po ng province, since marabe po kasing ino-operate ng district hospitals, I think hindi po talaga kaya. That's why ang gusto po ng namin, i-Kong Reinan, siyempre is for the DOH to run the hospital para mas maganda po yung services. Since yung capabilities po ng province ay medyo mababa na po at lalo pa pong bumaba dahil po nabuhasan rin po yung budget nila for the coming year. So, yun lang po, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Mike Tan. So, your point, Honorable Arrogancia, is you want the establishment of the hospital to be under the Department of Health?
Tama po, Mister Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Arrogancia.
Well, given that, Mister Chair, I'd like to move for the approval of House Bill 2905, subject to the approved inputs and amendments of this committee.
So, there's a Julie seconded motion to approve House Bill number 2905, subject to style amendment, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much for, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. We now proceed with the House Bill number 3669 by Honorable Ian D. Honorable Ian D., you are now recognized?
Hi, sir. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, all the House reps. Good morning, Chair and all our guests from DOH. Yes, I'd like to adapt my explanatory note for my sponsorship speech of HB 3669. And could I also just put a few amendments just to change the name? That was a typo. It shouldn't be D District Hospital. It should be just Third District Hospital because we are really in need of it. And yes, that's, we'd like for that to be approved. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ian D. We take note of the correction of the title. It should be an act establishing a hospital in the municipality of Alicia, province of Isabela, to be known as Third District, not D District.
Yes, Chair. Yes, Mister Chair.
Thank you. DOH, Dr. Melissa Sena?
Thank you, Mister Chair. The DOH supports the establishment of a hospital in the municipality of Alicia, Third District of the province of Isabela. But again, we recommend that the facility be under the direct supervision and control of the province or of the municipal government should the province desire. But however, we really recommend that it will be under the province in view of the province-wide health system, that the healthcare provider network is under the province or highly urbanized city. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Dr. Sena.
Okay, yes.
Honorable D?
Yes, I'd like for just clarification. Yeah, I heard it from the previous House Bill. But yes, so if you support it, I'd like to the motion to pass House Bill 3669.
Yeah, given that, Mister Chair, I'd like to approve for the... I'd like to move for the approval of House Bill number 3669, subject to amendments.
So, there's a duly seconded motion to approve House Bill Number 3669. Hearing no objection, the motion to approve House Bill Number 3669 is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Carl Nicolas Cari. Thank you very much. We now proceed to House Bill Number 3344 by Honorable Maria Lucille Nava. Maria, Honorable Nava is now recognized for her sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, to my colleagues in the committee, to the guests, the resource persons, and everyone. Pleasant morning. House Bill 3344 really seeks to upgrade our only hospital in the province of Gimaras, the Doctor Catalino Gallego Nava Provincial Hospital, from a Level 1 hospital to a Level 2. Upgrade, increasing its bed capacity from twenty-five beds to two hundred beds and upgrade its professional healthcare services and facilities. As you all know, this is the only hospital in the province to cater to more than two hundred thousand individuals. And since this is an LGU hospital Level 1, we could only cater for such minor care and supervision. So, we have seen the urgency to upgrade our hospital to Level 2 in order to cater to the much-needed increase in patients in our province. And as you all know, since we are an island, we are about fifteen to twenty minutes by boat to Iloilo City, thirty minutes by Roro. And that's only port-by-port distance. And in order for our patients from Gimaras to access quality healthcare in Iloilo City where the Level 2 and Level 3 hospitals are located. And we have seen this urgency during the time of COVID pandemic where our patients, since we are a Level 1 hospital, we could not cater to the severe cases of COVID. And the COVID hospitals are located in Iloilo City. So, what we do, we were forced to manage our patients in the island since mostly the hospitals in Iloilo were overwhelmed. So, we have to really manage our own. So, we did actually made our COVID, own COVID ward in the hospital. And I think with the advent of all this, I hope not, the pandemics, we would like to cater to the ailments and everything necessary for the health services in our province. And because of this, I think, I hope you could consider, consider our, the urgency of this bill and hence the approval is deeply sought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Nava. Dr. Senna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH fully supports the upgrading of the Doctor Catalino Gallego Nava Provincial Hospital into a Level 2 Provincial Hospital. Further, considering that Gimaras is classified as a province with high gap for health facilities but low capacity, the DOH will still provide capital outlay support for the upgrading of the hospital. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dr. Senna. May we now call on the Chief of Hospital of Doctor Catalino Gallego Nava Provincial Hospital? Dr. Lopez, are you on board?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, please.
Good morning, everyone. Why is there a need for upgrading to Level 2 Hospital as what Congressman Nava have said? And we are the core of our hospital in the province, accepting referrals from the five rural health units of the province. We cater for two hundred thousand patients in a year. And during inclement weather, there is a difficulty in transporting patients out of the province. And another problem is no one will accept, if no one will accept our referral, especially noted during the pandemic surge. So, with upgrading of our hospital into a Level 2 Hospital, we can offer more clinical services for inpatients as well as our ancillary services to our clientele. So, with upgrading, we could cater more patients in our hospital.
Thank you very much. Just to clarify, how many beds you want to upgrade, the number of beds from, from what number of beds to what number of beds?
Actually, Mr. Chair, we are licensed twenty-five bed, Level 1, but we are functioning one hundred fifty. So, we really need to upgrade our bed capacity because of the bulk of patients that we are receiving. So, to two hundred bed capacity.
So, it's two hundred bed capacity. Thank you, Honorable Nava.
Yep. If there are no further comments, Mr. Chair, given the urgency of this, I do wish for the approval of House Bill Number 3344. Seconded.
So, there's a duly seconded motion to approve House Bill Number 3452. No, 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 no. Three, three, four, four. Hearing no objection, the House Bill Number 3344 is now approved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues.
We now proceed to House Bill Number 3915 by Honorable Larni Roque, Honorable Roque, for your sponsorship speech.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and a blessed morning also to my fellow committee members and esteemed colleagues who are authors of the legislative measures to be taken up in today's meeting. And as well as to all our distinguished guests present here and also on Zoom, I'd like to express my gratitude to you, Mr. Chair, and the Committee Secretariat for including House Bill 3915 in today's agenda. First of all, I would like to amend the title of House Bill 3915 to read as Bukidnon Farmers Research and Medical Center, or BFRMC. Let me also put on record that I filed this bill because there is no government hospital in the city of Valencia, which is the most populated LGU in the province of Bukidnon. And there is also no hospital operated by the Department of Health in the whole province of Bukidnon. The filing of this House bill is in line with the desire of no other than our President Ferdinand Ramaldes Marcus Jr. in establishing specialty and research medical centers outside the nation's capital. This bill seeks to establish the Bukidnon Farmers Research and Medical Center in the city of Valencia, Province of Bukidnon, which shall be placed under the supervision and control of the Department of Health in partnership and coordination with the Department of Agriculture and Research Institute for Tropical Medicine. The economy of Bukidnon is primarily based on agriculture, livestock, and poultry, and a big number of its population are farmers. And they suffer from diseases common and unique to people in their line of work. This proposed measure seeks the establishment of a specialty hospital in Valencia City that will cater to the medical conditions and needs of our farmers and other agricultural workers, and more importantly, will be the center for research of the diseases and conditions unique to them, which will help the whole agricultural population of the country in the long run. It will be the first of its kind in the country. Based on the 2020 Census of Population and Housing, Valencia City is the most populated local government unit in the province of Bukidnon. Despite the dense population of Valencia City, it has no existing governmental hospital, which will cater to the poor and marginalized constituents of the city. All hospitals in Valencia cities are private, which our poor constituents cannot afford. In our district, there is only a satellite hospital of the Bukidnon Provincial Hospital in the municipality of Kalilangan, which has very limited bed capacity and medical equipment. In times of medical emergency, which requires surgeries, the poor and marginalized citizens of Valencia City need to travel forty-one kilometers to the Bukidnon Provincial Hospital located at the municipality of Maramag, which is part of the Third District of Bukidnon. With the limited hospital facilities of the Bukidnon Provincial Hospital, coupled with the congestion therein, our constituents are forced to travel for more than three hours to the DOH-operated Northern Mindanao Medical Center in Kagayan de Oro City, which is a hundred and thirty-seven kilometers from Valencia City. Due to the nature and location of their work, farmers are continuously exposed to various physical hazards, weather, terrain, machinery, exposure to venomous and virus-carrying reptiles and insects, toxic substances such as pesticides, fertilizers, fuels, and organic dust, stress, among others. These lead to associated health problems, including but not limited to dengue, malaria, chystomyasis, valariasis, cancer, respiratory diseases, kidney diseases, heart ailments, snake bites, and bite victims of other venomous animals. However, due to poverty and limited access to social services, most ailments of our agricultural workers persist without proper medical intervention. The big number of cases will serve as a good research endeavor for the scientists and physicians to be affiliated with the facility where new treatment modalities or improvement of existing protocols may be discovered and improved. A university, the Central Mindanao University, is also located nearby, and the center can forge a partnership and affiliation for its research endeavors. Reports of individuals being attacked by snakes have become frequent in Bukidnon as well as other agricultural areas in Mindanao. According to the Department of Health, snake bite is an important medical emergency and cause of hospital admission. It may result in death or chronic disability of many active younger people, especially those involved in farming and plantation work, if not immediate treatment, if not given immediate treatment. Throughout the years in my life in Valencia City in the province of Bukidnon, there have been several instances that my home have been invaded by cobras, specifically the spitting cobra, sighted in my garage, which on my way, while I was on my way to my car, in my garden, which took the lives of my dogs on separate instances, and at one time inside my bathroom. You can imagine that the life of this representation, including the lives of the members of the family and the rest of my household, are at risk, especially when there is no facility or center which can cater to this medical emergency. So much more as the lives of our farmers who are exposed to these snakes and other venomous species every day. No facility in the region can produce antivenom. An antivenom center will be part of the research initiative of this bill. The bill proposes the establishment of a research specialty hospital, which will cater specifically to the medical conditions of our farmers and other agricultural workers and conduct research to establishment, research to establish prevention strategies, treatment, rehabilitation, and innovations in addressing the farmers and other tropical diseases. The establishment of Bukidnon Farmers Research and Medical Center in Valencia City will not only cater to the poor and marginalized farmers of the Fourth District of Bukidnon, it will also serve the poor and marginalized farmers of neighboring municipalities, nearby provinces, as well as the general population in the area. Given the above premises, the urgent passage of this bill is earnestly sought. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Roque, from the DOH, Dr. Senna?
Thank you, Your Honor. We support the establishment of the Bukidnon Farmers Research and Medical Center. However, we recommend that it shall be under the direct supervision and control of the province. Thank you, Your Honor.
Honorable Roque?
Amenable. Okay. So, with that, yes, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of House Bill Number 3915, subject to the approved inputs and amendments of this committee, Mr. Chair.
Second. So, there's a motion to approve House Bill Number 3915, duly seconded, hearing no objection, House Bill Number 3915 is now approved. We now proceed with House Bill Number 5293 by Honorable Peter Miguel. Honorable Miguel, you are now recognized.
Mr. Chair, to our esteemed resource person and esteemed colleagues, Maganda Umaga po. Briefly, SocSergent in fact is Region 12. It's composed of South Cotabato, North Cotabato, Sultan Kudarat, Sarangani Province, as well as big cities like General Santo City, Coronadal City, Itakorong City, and Kitapawan City. Right now, we have a SocSergent General Hospital, but in fact, its coverage of services just belong to the South Cotabato people. With the advent of new geopolitical changes, where in Cotabato City used to belong to Region 12 now belongs to Barm government. In effect, the present Regional Hospital located in Cotabato City would eventually not serve its purpose for the region. Hence, there is a need, immediately, immediate need to establish a Regional Hospital, a medical center that would cater all those provinces and cities I previously mentioned. So, that's the gist of this bill, and we pray that this will be approved. This one is possible time. I praise, I pray. So, we move. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. May we hear from DOH?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The DOH supports the intent of House Bill 5293, which seeks to upgrade the SocSergent General Hospital and rename it into SocSergent Regional and Medical Center. RA 11102 established the SocSergent General Hospital, which was enacted in 2018. Currently, the hospital is implementing its hospital development plan from 2020 to 2025. And as of today, it is licensed to operate as an infirmary with an authorized bed capacity of fifty. So, the upgrading of the hospital is consistent with the vision for DOH Hospital to serve as apex or end-referral hospitals of the healthcare provider network. However, we recommend to defer the proposed upgrading until such time that the SocSergent General Hospital has near the end term of its hospital development plan to better evaluate its succeeding capacity and capability requirements. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Senna. From the Chief of Hospital of SocSergent General Hospital.
So, good morning.
Boromeo.
Yes, good morning, Chair, and the rest of the members of the Congress and the Committee on Health. So, as was mentioned by our representative Congressman Dr. Peter Miguel and Dr. Senna. So, SocSergent General Hospital is presently an infirmary level with a license to operate of infirmary, but we are now applying and waiting for our LTO for Level 1. So, since our hospital is situated in the center of five municipalities of the Upper Valley community, and also one of the reasons why we are proposing this House bill because the only apex and referral hospital in SocSergent Region is the Cotabato Regional and Medical Center, which is one hundred twenty-seven kilometers away from the Coronadal, from Marbel or Marbel. So, referring our cases from such area, which almost two and a half hours' drive coming from. And most of our patients that are referred, may di na tatakot sila going to Cotabato City because, you know, the area is most in Magindanao, so where there are a lot of conflicts in that area. So, that is one of our problem in referring patients going there. And one of the, what they are doing is they refer the cases to Southern Philippines Medical Center, which is in Davao City, which is two hundred two kilometers away from the area of Coronadal City, and it will take three and a half to four hours' drive. So, if you consider So if you consider referring patient to those centers or to those apex hospitals, mamatay ang patient na binon the way. So since Cotabato Regional and Medical Center has been under now, so the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region of Muslim Mindanao or BARM, so our bed-to-population ratio is nagakaron more of gap since the population of SocSergen is almost five million. Five million and our bed-population ratio is, one is to eight hundred sixty-seven bed, hospital-bed ratio, and the side is one is to eight hundred. So nagakaron po tayo ng gap. Since CRMC has been under the BARM, so it increases the gap of our problem. And also, we have a lot of GDA in our area. It is two hundred twenty-six barangays in the region of SocSergen. So we need to offer more quality healthcare services to those regions. And, and that's one of the reasons why we are proposing this to be a Regional and Medical Center in the region. So this is under our representative Congressman Miguel's of the second district of South Cotabato. And the only Level 2 hospital in our region, which is a government hospital, is the South Cotabato Provincial Hospital, which is two hundred bed capacity, but they accommodate almost four hundred patients. And the daily census nila is nag-aabot po ng two hundred plus, two hundred sixty daily bed census po nila. And the other hospital near to our area is the Norala District Hospital, which is only a forty bed capacity, but they accommodate approximately one hundred sixty-six percent. So talagang full po ang mga key patients doon. And that our hospital, the SocSergen Regional Hospital, will answer that problem in our region. Because of that, because we are located at the center of the SocSergen, sir, and we must cater a number of almost five million population. As was mentioned by Congressman Miguel, SocSergen has four provinces, the South Cotabato, North Cotabato, the Sultan Kudarat and Sarangani, and we have two chartered cities, Cotabato City and General Santa City, and three component cities, Kitapawan, Itacorong, as well as the Coronadal City. So we have a lot of problems to settle for our patients. We wanted to decongest our, the nearby hospitals in the province of the SocSergen. So that's all, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Borromeo. You said the, at present, the hospital, SocSergen General Hospital, is infirmary hospital?
Yes, sir.
So you want to upgrade it to a tertiary hospital? Or secondary, a Level 2 or a Level 3 hospital?
A medical center, sir.
Level?
Level 3.
3. Oh, it's a Level 3. Thank you, Dr. Borromeo.
Thank you, sir.
Well.
Yes, Congressman Reyes.
Yeah, given the urgent need, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of House Bill 5293.
Second.
Seconded.
So there's a move to approve House Bill Number 5293, duly seconded, hearing objection, House Bill Number 5293 is now approved. Congratulations. We now proceed.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. I want to, inquiry lang po, sir.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, Honorable Villa Ferte.
Sir, I just found out that the House Bill 2955 is part of the agenda. I think it's on the fifth of your agenda. While, while you are still about to tackle it, may I request the Chair not to defer tackling of this because we strongly oppose this measure. While I understand, sir, that it is the fifth in the agenda, I, I'm not able to go there because I'm in the commission on appointments. Gusto ko lang po sana ang, ma-defer muna ang tackling yan because we strongly oppose the creation of that House Bill because malipoy ang premise ng proponent na ang nearest hospital po ay one or away. There is an existing hospital in the proposed area already. So, so as not to delay this hearing, fifth po is agenda yan. Again, we would like to express our strong opposition to that. The governor is strongly opposed to that. Ah, baka pa kasi ko itackle, ah, hindi mahear po 'yung aming opposition po, Mr. Chair.
We'll take note of that, Honorable Villa Ferte. Thank you very much.
Ah, sir, sir, so ano, part ba ng agenda today, 'yung 2955 po?
Yes, it is a calendar to be deliberated upon this morning, Honorable Villa Ferte.
Yes, I will, again, just will I reiterate our opposition, wrong opposition. Siguro later, when it is tackled, I'll try to log in again, oh. But again, the DOH can certify, there's a building already existing in the proposed area that they want to create. It's unnecessary duplication. So salamat po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Villa Ferte. We now proceed with the House Bill Number 3.
Mr., just a manifestation, Mr. Chair. I was listening to doctor regarding SocSergen. That's also our dilemma also because we wanted to have a third level, but it involves eighty personnel, forty of which are doctors, ang kailangan. So nagiging problema. That's why my manifestation would be, as if the DOH is, you know, they are always making hard for the hospital because of their licensing procedure. Yun ang nagiging problema. And every year, they're increasing, they're issuing policies, which are, you know, making us difficult to comply with. So at the end of the day, we stick to our level. Because as of today, they are asking for Level 2 is more or less forty medical doctors ang kailangan for you to operate on Level 2. All the rest, kung Level 3 ka, nagiging, you have some specialties, specialist doctors that are, ano. So I don't know, Mr. Chair, whether or not we should get to know or interfere in the policymaking as far as licensing is concerned. While we are for that, to make sure that the hospitals are in line with, with, with the policies that they want to. But at times, parang sobra na ata 'yung mga ano nila, mga policies that they're issuing. That's only a manifestation, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Palma. We now proceed with the House Bill Number... 3452 by Honorable Bem Noel and Honorable Josephine Veronic, Veronic Lacso Noel. Honorable Bem, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Akala ko po nakalimutan niyo na ako. Nasanay po ako kasi napag-House Bill, sunod-sunod po 'yung, 'yung pagtawag, no? Anyway, may I request that explanatory note be made as my sponsorship speech and pray for the approval of House Bill 3452. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Noel. From the DOH, Dr. Sena.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH acknowledges the intent of House Bill 3452, which seeks to establish a satellite facility of the Eastern Visayas Medical Center. The DOH recommends the following: Establishment of a separate facility, not a satellite, but it shall be under the direct supervision and control of the province with its own funding, operations, and management. As I've mentioned earlier, an extension facility may deplete the funds and human resources of the parent facility, in this case, the Eastern Visayas Medical Center. The province may also consider increasing the bed capacity and upgrading the service capability of another facility such as the Northern Summer Provincial Hospital, which currently has a bed occupancy rate of one hundred fifty-five percent, well beyond the ideal eighty to eighty-five percent bed occupancy rate. Upgrading the existing facilities within the province instead of establishing a Level 3 hospital as intended by the bill may be preferable given the limited resources. In addition, the DOH is set to operationalize the Summer Island Medical Center in Calbayog City. We shall also address the growing healthcare needs of the province. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Sena, yes, Honorable Bem?
Exactly po, kaya po tayo nag-file nitong bill na to as a satellite hospital. Kasi po, marami rin pong tatamaan na hindi makakover nung Summer Island Medical Center na maganda po at natayo din. Kasi po, ang Northern Summer, ike-cater niya po 'yung papuntang Pacific towns po. And I don't think the province can afford this. Kaya nga po natin finail and requesting DOH na gawin na lang itong satellite hos... gumawa tayo ng satellite hospital. In the same manner na ginawa po nung ano, Third District ng Lete, nag-gumawa, nag-establish po ng satellite hospital sa, sa isang town, sa Third District, sa Villaba. At dun po, medyo marami na pong naserve, no? Kasi, if you travel from the north down to the west, where Summer Island is, is, no? Let's, that with, with the condition of the roads now, at least three hours. Going namang po sa Takloban, at least six hours. Can you imagine po, kung ang dadalhin dun eh, critical, hindi na po aabot kahit sang oras. So that is why we were praying na sana magkaroon ng pagkakataon at magkaroon ng, sa susunod siguro na budget, ang DOH para man lang iconsider ang pag-establish ng satellite hospital po sa katraman. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Bem. Just to clarify, when you say an extension or a satellite, are they synonymous? Dr. Sena?
In DOH, yes, sir, extension facility or satellite hospital are synonymous, Your Honor.
And you were saying that you are discouraging or you're not encouraging the establishment of an extension hospital because it may deplete the resources of the mother hospital?
That is correct, Your Honor. Instead, we recommend establishing a separate facility with a separate license.
Honorable Bem?
Oh, well, Mr. Chair, wala rin namang po tayong magagawa. Kung walang perang DOH, walang budget enough to establish a satellite hospital. Anyway, we will be working with them and hopefully, pag dumating po 'yung panahon na kaya na po, I am pretty sure that the province of Northern Summer will, will pray na magkaroon po ng kahit satellite hospital na lang po, no? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Bem. Congressman Ray?
Yes, Mr. Chair, given that, I do move for the approval of House Bill Number 3452, subject to the amendments and the approved inputs from this committee.
There is now a duly seconded move to approve House Bill Number 3452, hearing no objection, House Bill 3452 is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all the members.
Congratulations, Honorable Bem. We now proceed with...
Mr. Chair. My apologies, Mr. Chair, this is Nihal Bor...
From the DBM, Ma'am Nihal?
Yes, may be recognized, Mr. Chair.
You are now recognized, Ms. Nihal.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good morning as well to the honorable members of the committee and all else in the meeting room. Regarding House Bill Number 3452, Mr. Chair, we have a specific comment on, particularly on Section 4, appropriations and funding.
Please proceed.
The provision states that the funding shall be charged against the current year's unappropriated balance of the DOH. We want to note, we respectfully note, Mr. Chair, that given, pursuant to the Administrative Code EO Number 292, all, any unreleased appropriations after the end of the validity period, while undisbursed, shall be reverted to the general fund. Second, Mr. Chair, as regards the earmarking of funds, we respectfully discourage earmarking as it limits the flexibility of the national government in budgeting national government resources. So we respectfully recommend, Mr. Chair, that the usual appropriations of phraseology or language is adopted should the bill prosper. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Nihal. We'll take note of your comment and input. Okay, so... Okay, so we proceed now with the House Bill Number 5729 by Honorable Yedemarie Romaldes and Honorable Judas Sidre, but because they are not around, we now recognize Honorable Nava to sponsor in their behalf.
Good morning again, colleagues and guests. It's my honor to sponsor House Bill 5729, an act establishing a general hospital in the city of Iligan, province of Linao del Norte, to be known as the Iligan General Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. And let the sponsorship speech be our explanatory, eh, let her explanatory note be our sponsorship speech.
Thank you very much, Honorable Nava. DOH, Dr. Sena?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH supports the establishment of the Iligan General Hospital. However, we recommend that it shall be under the direct supervision and control of the city government of Iligan. The hospital shall be part of the citywide healthcare provider network. Iligan City is within two hours' travel time to Northern Mindanao Medical Center in Cagayan de Oro and within one hour' travel time to Amay Pacpac Medical Center in Marawi. Both DOH hospitals, which serve as apex or end-referral hospitals. The DOH may still provide technical assistance in accordance with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Sena. Honorable Reyes?
Yes, given that, Mr. Chair, no other comments in it. I do move for the approval of House Bill Number 5729.
Second.
Before we move on, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Reader Robes. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Humabol ako, ah. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve House Bill Number 5729, duly seconded, hearing no objection, House Bill Number 5729 is now approved. We now proceed to House, House Bill Number 4215 by Honorable Mohamed Kalid Dimaporo. But since he's not around, we now recognize Honorable Reyes to sponsor in his behalf.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So on behalf of Representative Dimaporo, I would like to submit his explanatory note as his sponsorship speech for House Bill 4215 and seek the approval, the same. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Reyes, Dr. Sena.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The DOH supports the establishment of Balloy General Hospital. However, we recommend that it shall be under the direct supervision and control of the province of Linao del Norte. The establishment of a new hospital shall strengthen the healthcare provider network of the province. The establishment of a new hospital shall strengthen the healthcare provider network of the province and increase access to healthcare. We also recommend to consider upgrading and increasing the bed capacity of its hospitals, particularly the Colambogan Provincial Hospital, which has a bed occupancy rate of 145%. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dr. Sena. Honorable Rita Robes?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Dr. Sena, I believe that all of my colleagues are here to seek help from the national government. It seems that you have a very big ball, you're dinedribon ng lahat sa amin. So it's actually a pride for us to come up with these bills. Baka naman, in the near future, you would like to consider to make a study on the, on the positions of the congressmen and the mayors down the line that really need your help. Kaya kami gumagawa ng batas na ganito. Actually, I'm one of a victim eh. I have a bill, St. Bernadette Children's and Maternity Hospital. It took me for 7 years and mapaa-approved. Then finally, it got approved, but unfortunately, all of the findings should come from the local government. So hindi rin po kaya, baka you might want to sit down in your planning. I'm pretty sure you're gonna come up with January, February, March, April, you might want to consider. And I would like to request the Chairman to come up with a position paper that we could be, we could sign, everybody would sign, to make a request and make a review on the budget allocated for all of these things. Ilan po, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Rita, we'll take note of your suggestion. I, I, I am with Honorable Rita in appealing or maybe commanding the Department of Health to consider, to really consider the position of Department to Health with regards to the establishment of hospitals. Because it is, well, it's easy for us to approve the establishment of hospital, but it's a different story when the DOH says, yes, we support, but only if it's under the LGU. But the, the reason why we are asking the DOH the approval of the establishment of the hospital is because the local government do not have the sufficient or adequate resources to fund the hospital. So maybe we can, or we can sit down with the Department of Health and come up with maybe a compromise solution to this parang ano eh, chicken and egg problem eh, diba? So sana makarating kay OIC over here, Dr. Sena. Yes, Honorable Roque?
Mr. Chair, the filing of our House bill is in line with the desire of no other than our very own President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. in establishing specialty and research medical centers outside of the national's capital. So we would like to put it on record that regarding the comment from the DOH recommending that it be, will be under the supervision of the provincial government of Bukidnon, I would like to insist that this bill seeks to establish the Bukidnon Farmers Research and Medical Center in the city of Valencia, province of Bukidnon, which shall be placed under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Roque.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Honorable Palma?
I was hearing the comment of the Honorable Robes regarding the manifestation. Can we come up with a resolution in aid of legislation for, to this effect? So that we can have the legal basis for the DOHs to appear before this committee? And probably win-win solution for that matter. Would that be possible, members of this house, of this committee right now, who are present, then come up with a resolution?
You come up, we put it into motion?
Yeah, I, I move, I therefore move for, for this August body to come up with a resolution, requesting the DOHs to shed lights on, on this manner of which we are here, to ask help from them. At the end of the day, they are throwing back to the local government units.
Second, second.
So there's a motion to, a duly seconded motion to, to seek an audience?
Resolution.
A resolution to, in aid of legislation, to
Appear before this committee, to shed light?
To invite.
To invite.
To invite the Department of Health, so that we can discuss with them this seemingly difficult problem in regards to the establishment of hospitals and upgrading of hospitals. Hearing no objection, the motion of Honorable Palma is approved. So, we still have, we are supposed to tackle the last bill, House Bill Number 2955. But this was, as you have heard, this was opposed by Honorable Villa Fuerte. And since the author of this bill, Honorable Arnie Fuentebella, is not present, the Chair deems it proper to defer the deliberation of House Bill Number 2955 to a later date. Unless there is any objection, we will now defer the deliberation of House Bill Number 2955. So are there other matters, any members which to?
Mr. Chair, well, if with the permission and the indulgence of all the authors here, of all the approved House bills, that all members here present and in Zoom be made co-authors on all approved House bills only, Mr. Chair.
Second. So there's a motion to include all the members present physically and by Zoom to be co-authors of all the bills approved in this morning's deliberation. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
But, Mr. Chair, if there are no other matters to discuss, I do move to adjournment of this meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion to adjourn, duly seconded, hearing objection. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your early attendance. I know it's very difficult to wake up early after a party. Thank you very much, Department of Health, thank you from the DBM and our team resources, resource person. Thank you, good morning.